All right, welcome everybody to the June 21 Board of Sloughland Soil Committee meeting.
All present.
Public comment, anybody have something they want to bring up forward to the board? Hearing none, all right, let's move on, we can't do the public hearing yet, so let's...
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes from June 7, 2017.
Motion approved. Second, just, it's not a major thing, but under one of the sections it says Ms. Boylston, supposed to be Bonson.
Thanks, Chris.
I didn't say Ms. Wes Boylston, it says Ms. Boylston. So I think it's page six, about the quarter of a way down.
Okay, that's it, thanks, Mr. Hurd.
Motion approved as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, warrants, Beck?
I make a motion to approve the warrants for the period covering June 8, 2017 through June 21, 2017, payable warrants for the town FY-17 number 50 and 51, payable warrant FY-17 number 25, sewer enterprise warrant FY-17 SE-28, school warrant FY-17 S-19, and municipal light plant warrant number 25.
Any motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's see, Laura Tannen, is she coming?
Come on up. How are you? Good, how are you?
Hi.
Hi.
Take a seat.
Have a seat. We're going to play for the personnel board. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
So I've been in HR for about 23 years or so, I've lived in town about that long as well. I currently work at Charter Communications, I've been there for about 12 years, and enrolled in the Masters Program at SNHU for some of my masters in HR as well.
Questions?
Can you do anything about our charter bills?
Yes.
I'll tell you what, if you can do something about my tax bill.
Touche.
That's a fair, that's a good deal.
Happy to.
Very good comment. So can you tell us why at this point in time you thought this would be a good committee to get off?
Sure, I was actually approached, I guess they found me through the census, there were a couple of vacancies, and I just finished semester at school, so I have some time, and always been kind of interested in public administration, just kind of how things work, so happy to donate whenever time I can.
And what, do you have a specialty in HR?
Not really, I'm more like a general, I'm a manager, but I think pretty much it's a generalist role. I work in a call center, so it's a lot of employee relations, interviewing, disciplinary action, policy writing, things like that, many hats.
How many openings do we have on the personnel board?
This is the last.
This is the last one?
Mm-hmm.
So moved? Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much, appreciate it. All right, Brian, come on up. Brian, some NFP Corporate Services voluntary vision plan for town employees.
I do have a few handouts off the press. New plan, one of the products that we are offering.
Thank you.
So as you all know, for July 1st, we recently switched from Harvard Pilgrim to Town Health for a 7-1 effective date. One of the things that members were going to lose with leaving the Harvard Pilgrim was their free eyewear program, which under the Harvard Pilgrim Plan, if you had your routine eye exam, a Cambridge Eye Dodgers, you could get free eyewear, things of that nature. So the Insurance Advisory Committee asked us to go out to get quotes for a vision plan that would help to offset that loss. It is a 100% voluntary plan, 100% paid for by the employees, no impact to budget. The plan is to make it effective, I believe it was October 1st, to have an open enrollment period along the same period as the flexible spending, then it would renew on July 1st going forward. It is a 48-month rate, so the rates won't change for four years, which is fantastic. More importantly, it's zero impact to budget because it's 100% voluntary, which we all like. So we did go out to bid, we went to quite a few carriers, we narrowed it down to three. One was the VSP Plan, Plan C, which is a very popular, very robust plan. We got a Blue 2020 quote and a quote from IMED. The Insurance Advisory Committee voted to offer the VSP Plan C because of the terms, so basically it's one every 12 months as opposed to, if you look on Slide 2, the very first part where it says frequency, you get one eye exam every 12 months, one frame, frequency and contact frequency is one every 12 months, whereas the others were 12, 20, 412. So again, the rates are a four-tier rate, so it will depend on people's demographics. There is an individual only, an individual and spouse, an individual and child, and a conventional family. So are there any questions?
Any questions?
What's the cost of it to the?
To the employee, if you go to Slide 2 on the bottom, for the individual only, the VSP plan is $8.68.
A month or?
A month, yeah. The individual, or the employee plus spouse is $13.89, employee and child is $14.18, and the family is $22.84. Now this, again, is for 48 months, so this is the rate that it will be for the next four Can't stress enough, 100% voluntary, so this is what the employee pays. So there is no contribution from the town, and there is no plan to contribute from the town as well.
Are exams covered under the health insurance?
They are.
Okay.
So this would supplement that. The majority of the folks, we use it for their frames, lenses, contacts.
The, underneath the VSP plan, it says hearing care discount?
Correct, there's also a discount for hearing, hearing aids.
You know what that is?
Offhand, I believe it's, I think we go to the next slide, and I apologize for the size of it, it's a little small.
This is to get to you.
If you had some glasses, you could see it.
No, it's not.
Hence the importance of this type of plan. It's a discount program, so it's not, it's not going to be a full-fledged plan where you're going to get free hearing aids, but there is a significant discount for them. I believe it's 20, 25%.
Any other discussion on this? You need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt VSP Plan C, Vision Plan?
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have that application, right?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Yep.
School Department's coming up at 7:40, right?
They'll be here probably about 7:30, they're hoping.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we're passing over the open space in regards to the dog pack, we're passing that over till the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Vernon, come on up.
Vernon Jackson, DPDW Director, and he has a few things to talk about. I will start with, let's see, considering closing off truck traffic at the Hosmer Street and Kings Mountain Drive, I've got some calls over the winter about Hosmer, particularly Kings, Kings Mountain was just recent, but apparently on Kings Mountain, I think the problem is people's GPSes direct them up through there as a shortcut through the town. I don't think trucks are going up there intentionally, and I haven't had a lot of complaints about Kings Mountain, but I've had a lot on Hosmer because it's a cut-through from Laurel Street into Sterling. So I called, I got ahold of a guy named Joe Frawley from the state, he's apparently their traffic engineer, and he says it's a lengthy process to do this, the town can't just do it on their own. He says it's been around for a while, he knew all about this problem, he'd heard it many, many times, but he says they have to have a traffic study on Hosmer, and they have to determine the percent of traffic as trucks to see if it's even warranted to, if it's only two trucks a week, it's probably not going to happen, but if it's, you know, several trucks a day versus the cars that go through, you might have a chance, so at this point, I guess what I would just request is that I follow through if you'd like with the state and see if they can set up a traffic study.
Do you know how many complaints you've had?
I've had two from Hosmer and one from Kings Mountain, but the Hosmer Street, I believe, is an ongoing.
Are the same people using it?
Yeah, well, I don't know, the state knew about it, the chief minister knew about it, I mean, it's been a complaint for more than the time that I've been here, so.
Is it the same people complaining on Hosmer?
I don't know.
Okay, because that, to me, that would be part of what we want to look at before we go.
It seems to be people walking on the street complaining, because trucks go by, and it's a very narrow road, if you've ever been up there, and it's not really designed for trucks.
I think there are a lot of roads around here.
But I could just look into it a little more.
That aren't designed.
Yeah, come back.
If we pursue this, you're saying you'd have to contact the state, does the state do the study?
I'm not sure, I think they do, I think they come up with their traffic counters.
As in, they pay for it?
I don't know.
I assume they did, but I shouldn't assume anything.
Yeah, we can find, we should find the answer to that, so what's going to cost us?
I'll find out if we can even do it, and how much.
King, Kings Mountain, I mean, you're saying, because that's, what are they doing, from Worcester Street to, I don't know?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Kings Mountain Road that well, I know it's part of the...
Goes from Worcester to York?
Yeah, and apparently they, for some reason, once in a while a truck gets stuck up in there, and I'm not really sure how they get up there, but I assume it's a GPS issue.
It's a cut-through from Maple Street to Route 12, essentially, without having to go, without going all the way down to the traffic light in the center of town.
Okay.
I mean, I use it if I'm in that area and I want to go to one of the stores that's on Route 12, I will go down Kings Mountain and cut through that.
I only heard that.
But I don't know about it, you know, if I had a truck, I wouldn't want to go through there.
You probably won't do it again, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, now, I don't know, I just think that one there, I mean, if you put a, you put a strip down to count traffic there, there'd probably be, you know, not many cars, so I don't know if that one, but I guess we can look into it, but...
Kings Mountain or?
Yeah, Hosmer's probably, they're cutting through there to get to 190.
Yeah, I guess it's, they think it's shorter, although I think the highway just before that, by the bridge of, what's it called?
The?
Raymond Hunting Highway, that, by the cycle center, would be a lot quicker, it's a bigger road.
Right.
So he said as an alternative, we could put Trail Blazers at Huntington Highway, pointing down towards Sterling, try and get them to go that way, and Chief Minister did offer to call the trucking companies and encourage them not to use Hosmer as an alternative.
What would we do, put a weight limit on the street?
Oh, we put, no, I mean... Probably post it as a weight.
Yeah, because that would be the only way, how would you?
Or just no trucks over a certain weight.
Yeah, right, it has to be a weight limit, right.
But he can't enforce it until the state says, you know, it's a no-truck road.
Do we have money, doesn't some organization do street counting and stuff for us?
Our Regional Planning Agency does a certain number of street counts every year, but this is a different type of study, it wouldn't be covered by this.
To get back, I wouldn't want to know if it's the same people complaining on both places, I know you only have one on the, on the Kings Mountain, but my other concern is, like, when they do a traffic count, they can tell the difference between a truck and a car?
Depends on what they use for counters, I know they have counters that can tell the difference by weight.
Okay, because that obviously is a concern, you know, right, if it's just going to count cars, then forget it, and then the other thing I think we have to be cautious of is, there's a lot of streets in town that people might be coming to us to say, this is a problem, once this is, if we get out and do something about it, there's a lot of streets in town that, you know, I can name another five, that people have said to me, do you see the trucks going up and down these streets, and we have a lot that are narrow, so I think we also have to be cautious of that. I agree with the chairman and Mr. Crowley here on the cost.
All right, I'll find out what the steps are, and it might be more advantageous to have the chief call the truck companies if he knows what they are, and ask them before we do anything, maybe they could just leave the whole problem like that. We can do that anyway.
No, that is one of the streets, you know, like, we may get more streets, definitely. If you remember last year or so, there are a couple of streets came in, especially my street.
Thank you.
133 Worcester Street?
144?
Yeah, 132, right?
That is the location. It's actually Hemmingway.
Hemmingway, right.
Over here.
Yeah.
He has a drain that goes across his property, comes out in the back, and it's a manhole, and then it shoots down a hill into the cemetery, and then across the cemetery to a tributary out there. And what happens is, when it rains real, real hard, it pops that manhole cover in his backyard, and he has a treehouse right there, and undermines underneath the treehouse down the hill into the cemetery. Only real, real bad storms, but apparently, I've got some information from back in 2014 where he was promised a fix, because it's been going on for a while, and Leonard Engineering actually engineered a fix for the price back in 2014, and I kind of wondered if he wanted to do a chapter 90 to put this to bed, because apparently he's been waiting for this for quite a while, this repair.
Well, it'd probably be double, if not more, at that price, right?
Well, it's only $37,000, it's, it's one manhole and some pipe, two manholes and some pipe, it's a little bit of a challenge because of the hill, as you see on the plans we gave you, if you look at the contour lines, it's a steep hill coming down in the back.
Is that on, whose property is on it?
It's his property, if it goes across his property, then initially goes to the cemetery.
But it's up like?
It's up like, I think John Westling did it back in...
I can recall talking about this for five-plus years, and then, now in his, there's a contingency of 15%. Is that per year, or is that?
No, this, I'd have to have him redo this probably, but...
Because it says 15%, but 14, that would be close to three years ago.
Yeah, but the question, I guess, for now is, do you want me to pursue this project and get some updated prices and?
I know we've, we've talked about it many times, and I really thought something was done, because when we did some work on Franklin Street, which really doesn't help, because it still puddles there.
Right.
We did some work, were you here for that?
No.
I thought we did, I thought we fixed it at the same time.
No, he says it hasn't been touched, and I have heard it said it has been touched. Leonard Engineering had, still had the plans, but they never really...
Right, no, I don't, I believe that it hasn't been done, but can we look back maybe to around that time and see, we did do work outside here, and I thought part of that project was to look at this issue or to fix it, but I mean, I don't...
It actually did overflow once since I've been here, that bad storm we had last, last summer, the one that Worcester was underwater, that storm, swept it out, washed out.
I think we should do something about it, but I think maybe if we can look back and see what we talked about, you know, what was said back then, I don't know.
You can certainly check the records to see what exists.
So what, if it was $37,000 and, so you're talking at at least $9,000 more in today's money?
Well, that's what a 15%, the project was 32.4, and then it's a contingency of $4,000, what would that be for?
That's just plus or minus.
Oh.
If you run it to something, they don't, some ledge maybe, or something.
Oh, I see.
Just...
So you're right.
We can cover it.
Fifty.
I, I think we definitely, if we're affecting a property owner in town with our pipes, we have an obligation, but there is a mobilization cost, we've got a lot of chapter 90 projects going on, can you look into maybe mitigating some of the costs?
Yeah, we may be...
Did it concurrent with something else?
Yeah.
Well, and plus, you know, for, as an example, it's a $1,000 mobilization cost, well, if we've got nine roads being paved and drainage on Newton Street coming in, it wouldn't be that hard to say you're already here.
Yeah.
Do this as an add-on to this job.
Extra, yeah. Or, and like I said, we can do some of the work, dropping that 14-foot manhole, we probably couldn't do it, but we could do the piping and the grading, the lumen seed and all that.
Yeah, if we can try to look back, I can recall the DPW possibly doing something on this years ago, again, I don't know.
We've been back several times to put the gravel back up on the hill, we just did it recently.
Right, no, I think it was, it was more than, when we did that Franklin, I don't know, it would be at the same time, Nancy may know, probably when, what year did we go with the end?
Three?
So probably around the same, yeah, so maybe we did it around that same time.
So we'll get updated pricing, and we'll check the history on what was discussed versus what was done, if anything.
That would be what I'd like to do, yeah.
Chapter 90 schedule, well, I don't have the approvals back from the state yet, which I was kind of surprised, but as soon as they're in, Leonard Engineering said they can have the project, if I get them this week, which I assume they would, he said mid to late July he can get the bidding done for Newton Street, and then we can start like within, usually within 30 days after that. And then the sidewalk project over at the library, that's the same thing, which is wait on approval, that we can do the same thing, as soon as we get the approval, we're quick to go out to bid and get those two rolling. Other chapter 90 info I have for you was... Oh, the, just for, numbers for you, we have $308,870 left, you know, chapter 90 money. I looked at a few roads that I thought needed paving, including the bottom of Prospect Street, the top of Prospect Street, Woodland Street, under the bridge of Two Prospect Street, and then Beaman Street, and then it's also lower Newton after we do the sidewalk project. And with all, with those jobs, if we did all those, we'd, we'd just be about $172,000. Then if we did this other drainage project on Worcester Street, say it's $40,000, we'll have about $200,000 left. I take that back, we'll have $100,000 left.
So, when you're talking about doing like Prospect Street, the bottom of it?
Yeah, the bottom of it, and then up to where they ended, up near the golf course, there's a seam where they ended.
Yeah.
And then it's nice across the top, and then down past Chief Manager's house, past the bridge, it gets real bad coming up, up to Woodland.
You're not talking about grinding, you're just going, going over it?
Yeah, grinding.
You were grinding it too?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is bad, that's what I'm saying, you can just, yeah.
So you said the bottom too, by Franklin, right after Franklin?
Right at Franklin, going up to where it gets nice, right past like the parking lot, the first parking lot.
Then further down.
Further up, and then Woodland Street from, Woodland down, under the bridge, to another nice seam where they ended, and then Beaman Street coming across, down by the walking trails down there, down by the rest of the world, from the bridge up to, almost to the school. And then I did have some people questioning if I should go all the way up in front of the schools, but we're just doing those, and if we do the 133 Worcester, we'll have $100,000 left, and I don't have the traffic study yet either, that's another one of my topics, is the pavement management, which is next, so I'll throw that right in.
Well, just the 300 and something thousand that you gave us the total for?
Real weight is what we have now, before we do anything.
Those other projects that are already on the burner to be behind you?
Those are taken care of.
That's already out of that three?
Newton Street and sidewalks are, we had 746.
That's what I thought, okay.
And that includes what's coming?
That was my question. Does that include the light first money?
Yes, with the 290 we got coming.
Yeah.
That's with our, this year, that's what we have in our offers, so to speak.
Did you get that? Do you have that, or do you get it after July?
He says we have it, but July 1st, I think is the actual date that we actually have it. He says we're getting it, should have gotten a letter, did you get a letter?
I've not seen it.
Okay, so you see, so the letter's supposed to come out, to give the official word that we have, but that's where, that's where slated for, $290,000, which will give us 308 for this year, for anything we want to use it for. And after these projects that I just mentioned, we'll have $100,000 left, so when the pavement management study comes out, if there's anything on there that's really, really bad, we can address it.
When do you anticipate the updated pavement management? I know you're getting ready to talk about that.
It's actually, it's actually complete, they're just finalizing it, I've got all the calculations and all of the, and a map, but the map they gave me is, it's, you really can't see anything on it, so I requested a large map with the roads on there and then a legend, and they're supposed to have that out like within another week.
So when you have the finalized product, it may say, hey, yeah, these, these roads are important, but we have this, so if we have another week, I'd suggest we table approving any of the projects until?
I wasn't really asking for approval yet, I was just letting you know what I was thinking, because once, I was waiting for that plan to come out to do anything concrete, so, so that's that. Online sewer billing is, all I have to say about that is it's on track to go on the 1st, there's no glitches, there's no delays.
For when?
July 1st.
Oh, good.
So there'll be something up on the website, people will be able to click on it and pay their bills to the sewer department as of July 1st.
Will we, are you able to do like the light department does in auto pay, where they, you just authorize them to automatically take it out of your account each month?
Same thing as they have.
Yeah, it's probably the same.
Yeah, and people have actually called and asked about it recently, so the word has gotten out that it's happening.
Great.
It's been six or seven years in the making, so we're building right along.
The last one is the II study, Weston Sampson, at the DEP's, how would I say, they wanted us to come in and talk to them about our study because we were kind of late getting there, and they've tentatively given us approval to not do the study, because we have such a new system, where our system is only 10 years old, most systems out there are 30, 40, 50 years old or more. So they're allowing us to submit a plan from Weston and Sampson, which will basically be, we're saying a 10-year plan where we're going to go in and we're going to camera 25,000 feet a year and make repairs as we go for 10 years, we have 250,000 feet of pipe, so we're proposing that we do 10,000 a year, and we don't really plan to find much in those areas, because we have PVC pipe, it's fairly new, 10 years old, which is almost unheard of in the sewer business nowadays. So we have a plan from Weston and Sampson for $10,900, and this is a, basically a request to develop the plan, and then once we get the plan, we submit it to the DEP, and if all goes well, they'll accept it, and we won't have to do the 144,000, we can just go on our 10-year plan, and we'll incorporate all this into the sewer rate study as we go.
So the 10-9 is going to pay for them to make a plan?
Right, to develop a plan, a 10-year plan.
That we can give to the DEP?
That we give the EP.
And that's all it's going to cost us, is $10,900?
That's for the plan, and then we, then we have to go every year, we have to allot so much money a year out of our sewer budget for this type, this type of work, this 25,000 feet of pipe that we have to investigate, and then hopefully we don't find anything, but if we do, we'd have to deal with that too.
Yeah, we'll come out of the surge, but it...
Right.
Do we have any ideas what the yearly nut will be for 10 years? I mean, if you're going to tell me we're going to spend 10 now and 20,000 a year for 10 years, or 100,000 now, it's, you know...
We don't really know, but what we're avoiding is 144,000 for the study that they want us to do, where at that point, we still have to fix everything we found.
Okay.
So if this, this way, we do it in small increments, we do it ourselves at our, basically at our own pace, and what we find, we fix.
And what the plan that they're going to put together, there'll be cameras in there, all right, we've got one-tenth of the system done, at the end of the 10 years, we'll fix what we needed to fix, but we'll also have eyes on the whole system?
Yes, records.
For, I mean, future problems, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
The good thing to point about, about this is that this timing is perfect, because we're going to be, you know, doing the sewer rate study this summer and completing it, you know, late summer, so the timing is such that we should have at least a basic plan ready from Weston and Sampson to inform our rate study, so that whatever they identify for potential annual costs moving forward, we can start plugging that into the, all the equations that they develop, and they'll be leaving us with a tool, a spreadsheet, that we can manipulate each year moving afterwards, so as, you know, if those annual amounts change, we just plug in that new number, and it tells us what, you know, how that fits into the current rates, or what rate adjustments we may need to do, so the timing is perfect on this.
So if we did, if, just going back to, and I agree with Pat in regards to, if we're going to spend 25,000 a year, you know, 250 instead of 144 today, so that would have, that 144 would have tested every one of our pipes?
Yes, all at once.
All 250?
All at once, yeah.
And at the end of 10 years, all we're going to do is 100,000 feet?
Well, the problem with the 144 is, is we get the, the whole study, and then they and then they probably want us to go out and fix everything all at once. Whereas here, we can do it in increments, you know, and whatever we find, we're just gonna do it a little bit a year instead of having to do it all.
But isn't it a good thing for us to know if there's leaks? Because it costs us money.
It is, it is, and we'll, we'll go to areas that we think there might be leaks first. But we don't think there's a lot of leaks, because it's PVC pipe. And it's not, it's not like the old Orangeburg pipe or RPC.
I understand that it's relatively broken.
I guess there's a couple areas that they think there might be problems, so we'll go there first. Because they can tell by their meters when it rains, in the pumping station, when it goes up and down. And that's part of the study too, they're gonna use their meters.
We pay for that.
Yes, we pay for it at the other end, the blackstone.
But the one forty-four would tell us, here's where your leaks are right now. Ten years from now, two years from now, we're not gonna know any new leaks, correct?
But, but like I was saying, if, if, we kind of know, from the pumping station, we have four pumping stations. So we kind of know from the pumping station what, what's leaking where, if there's any leakage at all. And there shouldn't be much, and there's, there's, there's some around the Woodland that they know of, because Woodland kind of spikes when it rains, so we're gonna hit that area first. So the first year we'll be able to hit our, you know, we can, actually, we can go anywhere we want with this study.
But no, my, my, my question really, or my point is, what you're proposing, or Weston Sampson's gonna be proposing, is to do a long-term fix over ten, and a long-term fix, basically, a permanent monitoring system over the course of ten years versus a one-shot, this is where your leaks are now. The hundred and forty-four thousand would tell us where our leaks are now. Ten years from now, the hundred and forty-four thousand study is useless. Whereas if we, and I'm kind of asking, I, I think this is my understanding, if we go with a one-tenth of the system, put cameras in over the course of ten years, we'll fix it as we go, but now we have a monitoring system in place for the future.
They don't stay, the cameras don't stay, they test and they're not.
We're not putting it permanently.
Okay, so it's just an in and an, okay.
Yeah, it's just a inspection.
It's just an in and, okay, got it, yep, okay.
I see what you're getting at.
I thought it was gonna be a permanent monitoring system, I said, oh, that's great.
If we're only doing ten thousand over the next ten years, we're not even gonna do the whole system at the end of ten years.
Well, we may not, may have to do any repairs in most of it. We have to look at it all, though.
But we won't look at it all in ten years.
We're doing one-tenth of the system.
In ten, oh, every year, oh, one-tenth.
Twenty-five thousand feet out of two fifty.
But like, yeah, but like Pat was just saying, but year one and two may leak in year seven and eight. And we're not gonna know, so it's, it looks like it's gonna be, it's an ongoing thing.
It may be, if we'll get through the first ten years, and we'll see how, how it goes at that point. But, but like I said, they can see some of it from the, and we could even option to put in meters in there.
Well, plus, if, if we authorize the study and they come back and they say it's gonna be forty thousand a year for ten years, we're gonna say no. You know, we're not gonna spend four hundred thousand over the course of ten years to save a hundred and forty in year one, that doesn't make any sense either. I don't think that, I, I hope that that's not what their study would say?
No, but we are mandated to fix whatever we find.
But not the...
Whether we find it with the one forty-four, or they find it with the, with the ten-year program, we still have to fix it. That's the idea of the program, is to, is to get rid of any infiltration, or at least mitigate it, yeah.
This phase, this allows us to phase the work that we're doing. If we went ahead and did the very expensive a hundred and forty-six thousand dollar test that required that we put all kinds of meters in at the different locations, if, whatever we found to be issued, then we would have to go out and do further investigation on those areas to find out exactly what was going wrong. And then we would be obligated to fix it within a certain amount of time. We'd probably end up having to have an administrative consent order with DEP, and they would say, you have to get this fixed within X number of time. This way, we're calling the shots, it's under our control. Our, our guys, Weston Sampson, know where our, probably our most risk-prone areas of our system are. Those will be checked first, and we are allowed to do this over a ten-year period, so we're in control on this. And it allows us to, you know, to at least start to do some very proper capital planning, you know, improvement of our infrastructure in a very methodical way.
My only concern is that the investigation piece, I have no idea, because we don't know what they're gonna charge. My concern is that, yes, I understand everything you just said, but we're looking at a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to tell us what our problem is, or an unknown amount spread out over ten years. I understand all of the pros of spreading out over ten years. You know, everything you just said, the capital planning, and, and oh, by the way, you're not forced to fix seventeen issues all, and hopefully we don't have seventeen issues, but you're not forced to fix them all at once. I'm, I'm just concerned about what the cost of the, the yearly investigation will be as a percentage of the main. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I, I think we should move forward with this, but that's just my concern.
And that's not even counting if there needs to be repairs?
Well, that's the thing, the one forty-four.
But if it needs to be repaired, it needs to be repaired.
No, I'm saying, but that doesn't, that doesn't count.
And the one forty-four is, is just meters, so there's no cameras involved at all, so it's...
So this is a better, this would be a better...
This would be a more comprehensive study.
Because if we did the one forty-four, we find an issue, now we gotta hire them to do the cameras through that section anyway, type thing?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay.
And what's the ten thousand nine get us?
Gets us the, the initial plan that we can submit to the DEP.
Oh.
To, you know...
That's bureaucracy, I'm like...
Yes, yes.
To avoid the one forty-four thousand, basically.
Any discussion?
Do we need a vote on that? Only because we have a new system that they would even entertain the fight.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract for Weston Sampson for ten thousand nine hundred dollars for the infiltration inflow study.
So, second, and then, then we can have, then with that, after that study, we can figure out what the ten thousand?
Yeah, once they get their plan.
What it's gonna cost a year.
We'll submit it, and then we'll have to go further and figure out. Well, actually, we won't know, I, I don't know how we're gonna figure out how much it's gonna cost a year, because we don't know what we have.
No, just to monitor, just to monitor, that we can get an idea.
That we can get, yeah.
Any discussion on that?
Good question.
Good.
Uh, money in the sewer budget to cover this?
Yeah, reserve fund, or the...
Enterprise fund, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I'm, I'm just curious, one other question. So, under all of this, when will the first testing be, do you think? Because, again, the rate, the more we have leakage, the more it's costing us, so when will...
It's four months to develop the plan, and we have to submit it in October.
Right, we would need to ask October town meeting to authorize, are using some of the reserves from the enterprise fund to do year one of the investigation and any repairs. So it depends on when town meeting approves the money. If, if town meeting approves it in October, then we could start anytime that fall.
So what if we had to do the one forty-four?
We would have...
They mandated us to do it.
Right, so we, we, we would have to ask town meeting to approve the full one forty-four this fall.
And if town meeting said no, if we're mandated to do it?
Then we would go back to DEP and say, we'll try, we'll try to go to the voters again.
We'd go ten years with that?
Uh, any, any else would you prefer to do it? Thank you so much.
I'm gonna wait for the sidewalk.
Okay.
All right, let's go bear to the public hearing.
Public hearing notice, public hearing notice is given, hereby given in conformity with the requirement of the general bylaw of the Town Office Boilstone. Article twenty-two, public hearing and notice, that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at seven fifteen PM, for the purpose of considering updates to the Selectment Policy G three, Emergency Plan for Ice Control and Snow Removal. The meeting will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room of the Town of, Town Hall, located at one forty Worcester Street, West Boilstone. For additional information or to review the proposed information, please contact the Office of the Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator at seven, seven, seven seventy-four, two six one, four zero one two. All intercessors and groups and agencies are invited to attend.
So the board will remember that we've been talking about this concept of amending the policy, several meetings now. And the key issue here is, which sidewalks will we agree to treat, meaning doing snow and ice removal after snowstorms? And of those sidewalks that we agree to do, which ones would be within a twenty-four-hour treatment system, and which ones would be as DPW is available to do them? So, as you know, through our discussions, we had identified a set of sidewalks mainly around the school, the center of the town and the school area, which would be the majority of the sidewalks to be treated or cleared. There were a few other smaller areas, and if you'd like, Butch can speak to the different sections of sidewalk that would be included, but you'll see in the policy, the shaded areas are the new proposed areas to be addressed within the policy, if it's approved. The second part of this policy amendment deals with a small change, basically, or clarification within Section H under fire hydrants, where it's just clarifying who will be handling what when it comes to clearing of the hydrants after snowstorms. So those are the two areas of modification that we were looking at for this hearing.
Any other questions?
Now, the only thing I, I wanna add, it's not in, in the policy, and I'll say this, as long as I'm, I'm here in the winter, you know, it's summertime, nobody's gonna remember, but if you have a fire hydrant that's, you can see from your front door, and you're an able-bodied person, go shovel it out, it'll take you five minutes, you're gonna help you, you're gonna help your neighbors, yes, it's, the policy says, the DPW's gonna do it, or the fire department's gonna do it, but you're gonna get it done a lot quicker than they are, and it's a safety concern for everybody, so shovel out the, the fire hydrants that are, that you can see from your front door.
Any other from the board? Any comments from the public on this?
Agreed.
All right, so we need a motion to close the public hearing.
It's the move.
Second.
Any other discussion in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the, uh...
Make a motion to approve updated policy number G three, the Emergency Plan for Ice Control and Snow Removal.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody from the, is a school coming?
Is...
No, they decided...
They did, decided not to stay?
They decided to stay, yeah.
Okay, say forty, is it? All right, school, common request of Special Education Fund.
Okay, so thank you. We, we actually have members of the Finance Committee here tonight. They have been reviewing this policy and discussing it with the schools. You, it was a board that asked Finance Committee to weigh in on this, and so they're here tonight to give us an update as to the position they take on the, on the feasibility of the fund, the advisability of the fund.
Ron?
Okay, well, I can just, in a, in a quick summary, we just met with, uh, Dr. Schacher and, uh, Mr. Shaw, who was the, the chair, to discuss a little bit about, you know, just their capital budget, funding mechanisms, so on and so forth, in, not necessarily in the context of this fund, but just have another court in. And I guess the things that we, we got from them is that they were certainly willing to share all their capital schedules with us, and in the context of what they spent a year on capital items, whether they're, you know, coming through us or not. They feel that, on another, on another note of the spent fund, I feel this would give them a little bit more resilience to the, the peaks and the valleys of Special Education Fund, um, which seemed to make some sense. I don't know if anybody else wants to offer their summary, but that was pretty much what I got out of it. I think that was pretty, I appreciate they came, that they came in and gave us the benefit of a little, a deeper dive of an explanation of the fund, since those are considerable expenses that they can experience.
And you, can you just remind how this gets funded?
Sure. So the way the legislature has set this up is that it would allow the school to take any unexpended funds at the end of fiscal year and deposit it into the Special Education Reserve Fund. The fund has to be voted by both the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen to be established. Then, at any time, if the school needs funds because they've run short on either special education transportation cost, or out of district placements, or what have you, it would then require a, a vote of the Selectmen and the School Committee to authorize taking funds out to use to cover those expenses. What this does is that it allows us to have some degree of flexibility to handle some of these unforeseen expenses that could quite often come, you know, through, at a point in a fiscal year where we don't have the ability to quickly get money to pay for those expenses. It takes time to call a special town meeting, there's an expense to call a special town meeting. So by having this fund and allowing the school to build this fund over time, it then provides a mechanism for us to pay for some of those extraordinary unforeseen expenses that we have at times with special education placements. This, the legislation does limit how much we can build that fund to be. It says that it cannot exceed two percent of the annual net school spending for a school district. So just to get a sense of what that value is, the FY seventeen net school spending amount, two percent of that is about two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So obviously, every year, as the net school spending amount increases, the amount that can be kept in that fund would increase as well.
It can only be used for special education.
Correct.
Special education that's not budgeted for. That's not, that's not budgeted for in that year.
Above and beyond what's budgeted, or what they might get for any circuit breaker funding.
So, can I, if some child moves into town unexpectedly and has more needs than what's in the budget, they can go to this after we approve it and the School Committee approves it? And then that could be the funding that you're saying, easier for, I can say, both sides? Is there other towns in the area doing this? Is, is that why this has come up besides, I understand, one year we don't have a high-dollar need, and then the next year we do, like, you can't control those kind of needs at any given time? But are there other towns doing it this way?
To be honest, I have not reached out to other towns to find out whether they're taking advantage of this. Did Superintendent Schacher mention that at all?
In, in the initial meeting with them, they said that it's being rapidly accepted by many towns, but not in specific...
This is a new, this is all part of the municipal, uh, what's that?
Municipal modernization.
So this is a fairly new program, it just, it just got implemented when we had all the changes with the way we do the warrants, so it's, it's new.
So did the finance, we need to take a position?
We did not re-vote, we, we did have a vote in a prior meeting, and it was basically, we had eight members at the meeting in front of our nine-member committee, and we, at that meeting, we split four to four.
Gee, thanks.
What would that tell for something by itself? Obviously, you know, there's nothing binding on that, but, but the same contracts, I think, I don't know. Speaking as, not, for the Finance Committee speaking personally, it does seem like it's a little bit of a, a way to smooth out some of the expenditures, you know, and frankly, at the end of the year, they can choose to take some of their excess, you know, funds that they have at the end of the year, and they can use that to pay next year's anticipated special bill bills if they wanted to. I mean, if they have those, if they're in there, we don't, you know, we don't have any savings. So I think there is some benefit to it.
Aye.
I wish the School Committee, I wish the superintendent in this, I mean, I know it's not you guys, I wish they'd stayed and just come up and talked to us about it, but...
We decided...
Yeah, so now, that money that's going into this account, where would it, last year, where did it go?
If there was money, if there's money left over, it would go into the general fund, it would be certified to go into free cash.
Right.
If, if, right, the part, part of the issue we ran into with, as far as the debate within the committee, is a comment made at the original presentation back during budget reviews was, you know, a comment about, okay, well, if we have extra funds, we need to spend them before the end of the year. And, you know, the, the schools, to their credit, are making a lot of operational changes that look to be very positive, so the demands on their budget may lapse a little bit, and there'll be more funds built. And, you know, the question ultimately, if, if they have twenty thousand dollars left over in the year, or two hundred thousand, if they have complete autonomy, if they're not going to use, and if they wanted to fund a capital item, they could, or not, depending on what they chose to do, there's no obligation for them to return anything to the town. It's part of the nature of the charter of the School Committee versus most of the town. So we were really struggling with the fact that some of their capital due procedures are different than the rest of the town, because they don't have to go through the same sets of reviews. So, but that's where we're really having a problem with this, is, okay, when you have those excess monies, what are the options, what might happen to them? And we have absolutely no compunction about schools making good choices with the monies for, for the right reasons. It was really more a question about control mechanisms.
What would be the downside if we did this? I'm having, you know, I can see it, small, little things, I think it makes sense for the school to do this.
Can I field that?
Yeah.
I, I've been listening to his discussion, I've heard a lot... I, I've been listening to his discussion, I've heard a lot of this before, I'm going to speak for a little bit here, because I, I've done my homework on this issue, and I've thought a lot about this issue. So, the way free cash works in this town is, anything that's not spent, it gets turned into, turned back in for the next fiscal year. What we do is we take up to, up to 1% of our current year budget, which is about $230,000, out of free cash to fund next year's budget. Whatever is left over, we, we do articles at town meeting, where we buy certain things. Whatever's left over after that, we fund the stabilization fund, so that we're at 5% of our operating budget. So generally speaking, if there's money left over, we'll put a little bit of money in stabilization, and whatever is left over after that, funds the capital investment fund. So that's where the, that's the, the final disposition of any unspent free cash is the CIB. Over the last five years, ballpark, the schools have turned it, turned back $200,000. So my initial thought was, well, that's $200,000 that wouldn't be in the capital investment fund. But then I thought about it more, and, and that's not really true, because one, one of the biggest turnbacks was for the generator for the school, which we then funded out of free cash, which they generated by not spending it. But, to Ray's point, what Dr. Schaffer said was, well, if there's money left over, we try not to turn it back. And if I was on the school committee, I'd be doing the same exact thing. My job is not to turn back money and, and be as fiscally responsible as possible if I'm on the school committee, not saying that they're not fiscally responsible, my job is to provide the best education I can for the town. If I've got $30,000 left over, and I can buy $30,000 worth of iPads for a classroom, it may not be something we had budgeted, it may not be something that we really even needed, but it's certainly going to enhance our, our school system, and it's not a waste of money. So, the schools, as a general rule, try not to turn back any money. The, the school board is going to now make the decision, and Roger and, and Beth are going to obviously be a big part of this decision, well, do we want to buy this, $30,000 worth of iPads, to use my example, or, yeah, they're nice to have, but wouldn't it be nicer to save it for, to smooth out these transitions? So at the end of the day, I think what will end up happening is, the schools try not to turn back anything to free cash anyway, it's, they're going to, they're going to make a decision, do we want the nice-to-have thing, or do we want to save it? And if they make the decision to save it, it's money that won't have to come out of stabilization, it's money that, that will be there when we have these problems. The downside is, and I want to make, make it clear, I'm not saying that the current school administration would do this, I'm not saying that any future school administrations would do this, and on the contrary, having been on the finance committee, and working with the school commit, the school committee and the school administration, I'm positive they wouldn't do this. But if it's a lean year, there's nothing to prevent the school committee from saying, we have $200,000 in this fund, we're going to develop a budget that's going to short, purposely short, special education. And three-quarters of the way through the year, say, we have a problem with our special education fund, we need to take $150,000 out of this fund to fund the budget. Money's a fungible thing, it, and the safeguard to that is, the people that are here, and this isn't just something we're talking about for today, this is, after we're long gone and the school committee has turned over, the reason both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee have to vote for it, is because I would hope that somebody here would say, well, okay, you have a $150,000 shortfall, why? Did, did somebody move into town? No. Did transportation costs go up? No. Well, what happened? We just didn't budget enough. Then, they, then it becomes, well, you have a structural problem with your school budget, and this isn't an emergency, and this, the Board of Selectmen at that point would have to say, sorry, you can't have it. So I personally have weighed all the pros and cons, and I'm going to recommend to this board that we vote to approve this. I've thought about it for a really long time, I've met with the finance committee, and I weighed the pros, and I weighed the cons, and I think it's a good thing, because at the end of the day, it will increase the savings, the overall savings that the town has. Yes, it may ultimately end up with a little bit less money in the capital investment fund for the, the short term, but at the end of the day, it will end up with more money, and it'll give us a stabilization for spend.
On a year, you know, how much money they return to the town?
Said five years, $200,000.
Over the last five years, it was approximately $200,000, is that...
Because there were, most of those years were balances that ranged from $17,000 to about $25,000, but there were two years where that amount was higher.
So sixty and a ninety.
Right. One, one year it was, the, the leftover was because of the, they didn't fully spend one of the grants that they had received, and that money ended up having to be returned to free cash. And then the other time was, they thought they had encumbered properly to purchase a new phone system for the schools, it technically didn't meet the requirements of law to be encumbered, so they had to return it to, to the general fund at the end of the year. So those were two unique circumstances, but typically, the annual amount in that five-year study showed, I'm going to guess, 17 to 25,000 returned each year.
So what happens when they reach $261,000, the max on the special aid?
It can no longer be funded, so...
Or whatever the remaining money, it will...
Would be returned to the general fund and certified as free cash.
But that, that 261, probably in five years, will be more.
It will.
Because net school spending will be up, and then 2% will be higher, so that could be, that could be going up.
That, that dollar amount will change, go up each year. Yes.
But it's still, you know, it's not going to go drastically.
You figure, 3% a year is roughly what the school, two and a half to 3% a year is what the school increases?
And then 2% of that.
So, that'll go up the same.
We may never reach the 261. We may never get there, but...
They take longer than they hope.
Chris.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys talked about, they shared a case where they had one special institute that was going to drop, and it was supposed to be $130,000 a year of transportation costs. It was, you know, so, and that's, that's, just to put things in perspective, how, how much 261 gets in?
If they, if they don't have it, you know, we have to get into the town, right? Somebody has to come, we cannot say no.
Right, you can't, by law...
Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but your scenario with, one year they shot their budget, that, that wouldn't be what this fund's for.
No.
They couldn't even ask, they couldn't even come and ask.
They, they...
They would have to try to, they would try to hide it into, not saying that they'll do it.
The school committee, in order to spend this money, the school committee has to vote to spend it, and the Board of Selectmen has to concur with that vote.
Right, but it has to be for an unforeseen, it can't, they can't just say, our budget was shot, it has to be for an unforeseen situation.
I, I don't...
They can't say, all these kids were in our school last year. One saying yes, and one saying no.
I, I think you need to take a closer look at the law, I don't think unforeseen is a requirement.
So where...
It's, it's actually, it's in our...
I couldn't find it in my agenda.
Yeah, the actual section of law...
It's short.
Yeah. It says, "To be utilized in the upcoming fiscal years to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated and unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation."
So unbudgeted, but then the first part says, it has to be something out of the ordinary.
It does say, "unanticipated out of district tuition or transportation expense," so it does say unforeseen.
Spelled right out, they, they can't, they couldn't do that situation, but, again, I, I would, I don't know if we can put it off, I, I'd like to have somebody from the school committee here with the superintendent, and give their input to us. I know they talked to you, and I know that's not, I'm not saying it to you guys, but I think it would be nice just to, for them to answer some of these questions we have, but that's up to the board, I mean, I don't know if it's important that we have to do it tonight. We're not going to be doing it.
The school committee did come and, and give a presentation on this, for their reasons, to, you know, smooth out the budget and everything that's been said, I agree.
We have a lot more questions, I thought.
I, I wish they had come, I, I've, I've asked all my questions of members of the school board and members of the finance committee. I personally am satisfied, but I didn't do that, you know, I did that as a one-on-one, because this is something I was very interested in. I, I know my mind is made up, I don't have any issue if, if the rest of the board wants to invite the school committee back to ask them questions.
Because I, I mean, I think the public should know, I mean, I know you ask questions, and that's fine, all of us can do that, but I think the public should know what the, the superintendent or the school committee member that was here has to say about it. You guys heard it, but the public didn't hear it. You heard it in your meeting, I'm sure there was no public there, we're hearing it from you, we don't hear from the school. I'd like to just get the questions, and I don't think it's something that has to be done today. I mean, I, I agree with Pat, I mean, I do lean towards saying, saying yes to this, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I'd still like to hear from the superintendent and the school committee again, and member of the school committee, so the public can hear also, not just...
When the, when the school came before, I was not at that meeting, I don't believe. Have other questions come up since then? Because if there are no other questions, and they've already answered it, I'm just wondering, why not move forward with it?
The only questions that I've received were some clarifications that Pat had asked, so we did a little research in terms of history of return of money from the schools, I had not received any other questions.
Okay.
Because, again, I, I would, I thought they were going to be here tonight. I really did, I mean, especially when I saw Mr. Shaw on the corridor, I thought he would come upstairs.
Well, in fairness, they, I don't believe it was an invitation to them to attend this meeting, they were invited, they, they actually requested a meeting with us...
Right.
...to clarify our vote as to how we arrived at that.
And your vote was four to four?
What's that?
You didn't clarify your vote, you told them the vote was four to four.
Yeah, we told them, and, and some of our concerns that surrounded, the discussion that surrounded how that vote came to, to be, and they tried to explain it. We kind of did it in a very satisfactory manner, as to, you know, give us some, at least give, give the members present some, I guess, additional information, and maybe a little more.
Will you be revoting on this?
Excuse me?
Will you be revoting on this issue?
Will we continue? Probably not, I think we will, I, it's, again, it's up to, it's up to the select board to vote, I mean, I don't know that we'll revisit it, I guess if we can get the same eight members back in the room. Because that's kind of one of our, one of our obstacles in trying to revote this, and we don't really feel it's fair, because, you know...
You will get, never get all nine members on this.
Right, we have a difficult time moving that, so I don't know that we'll... If I might, the, we posed the, the concerns of the committee, the, the nature of the debate we had in front of them, and they were very open and willing to provide some additional reporting at the year-end, to talk about the expenditure funds at the end of year. It, it just happens, it's not a lot of communication, it's not a lot of interchanges, pretty much all the committees have stopped meeting at that point, so it's not until typically the next year that we might have seen that, but they were very open to sharing the details of how the year-end expenditure would go, which, which goes to the heart of some of the issues that we have. So I, I personally thought the answers were pretty cogent, and, and I would say personally, it's, I, I would be inclined to endorse this, I think it is a useful tool, but, you know, I think we wanted to make clear that the school committee had some questions about processes.
I've spoken to two members of the school committee, and they're very, have some great answers for every, all the questions I had myself, so I had no questions about that either.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal from the school to change the way we budget our special aid.
I'll second.
Again, I would, I would like to just put it off until we can get somebody here from the superintendent, you know, just, just ask the questions so the public can hear the answers. I know that any one of us can talk to the school committee.
I think this is not going to be an emergency one. Do we have to make a decision today itself?
I think it comes up again till...
There is nothing wrong in...
We had his motion in a second.
Under discussion.
Now we're going to have this discussion.
Yep, under discussion, yes.
Okay. So, any other discussion on Sean's motion? You want to put it off? You wanted to, what?
Yes, I want to put it off.
Oh. All in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose to the motion? I'll putting it off.
Putting it off.
No.
I'll oppose the motion.
Then I'll vote no, just because I don't, again, I don't have all the answers. I mean, I know I can talk to the school committee, and I have in regards to it, but I'd like them here, so the public can hear what they have to say.
My vote is no, because, you know, we didn't hear anything, maybe you talked to the, one of, other members talked to the school committee, superintendent, but I don't think so, the board, on the whole, the board here, it anything, as well as the public has the right to know. So, and also, the third one is, it's not an emergency one, do we need to make a decision today? My vote is no.
And then, and then I'd also add to that, is a four to four vote from our finance committee is basically a vote of no, because they, I guess the motion was, do you endorse this plan, and it was four to four. So there was no, no vote from that committee, so, again, if the finance committee, the group that we put in place to look at this type of stuff, voted that way, I just think, I just think we should give, give a little more time, because it was, they didn't vote to endorse it, for some reasons.
Again, I'm not against, but, as Chris said, you know, we do need some more time, and we do like to hear from the superintendent, as well as the school committee members, and also the town people as to...
Okay, the motion is passed.
Okay, well, I just, I just want to clarify, from the finance committee standpoint, we voted, and it was, ties were not endorsed, you're correct, that the motion was not endorsed, however, they did come and give us some additional information that felt beneficial to all the members, we voted not to revote, but, by the same token, I think it was, you know, the additional information was helpful, and will help us in the overall capital planning process, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, new business. Request from Top Dog, Hot Dog vendor Leonard Dasses to add another location transit vendor license, Wachusett Wine and Spirits. I know he's already been over there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So she's just adding to another location?
This would be a fourth location, at your, I believe it was your May 17th meeting, you had approved him to be located at the Manor, also at the, at the club at 112 Church Street, and at the Common for Summer Concerts, so this would be a fourth location.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion. I, I have no problem with doing this, the only concern I have is, all those other locations are easy to pull in, to pull out, parking's not a problem. You go to Wachusett Wine and Spirits...
Did you see where he was?
I, I think, I think that's, that's the biggest issue I have, that parking lot's a disaster just, just in regards to people shopping. Now, four, two or three cars are stocked now buying hot dogs, or pulling in and out to buy dogs, I mean, that's why I had no problem with the other locations, especially where he sets up at the Manor. I mean, it's no, no problem at all, they pack right there, they can pull in and out, there's no traffic issue. I just think Wachusett Wine and Spirits is a very, very...
Sorry, I have to agree with Mr. Richard, because I saw, he was already located there, the side he was open, and there was four or five cars just parked around him, and it's hard to park them, I forget, no, very hard to park them.
Where, I didn't see, I wasn't around, where was he? Was he...
He was by the entrance, we're coming off 112.
At the grass area.
Oh, okay.
I would, really, in general, there's nowhere in that lot I would think would be a good spot. I mean, and he's only, I mean, it's not like, it's across the street. I mean, he's, he's, how many feet away? I mean, and the man is so much easier to pull in and out than Church Street and the Common, those, those are different stories, but, I mean, I don't want to take business from the guy, but I think, I think that parking lot's tough as it is now.
He only has one...
One car.
One car, he just, okay. I would, all right, so we have a motion, a second?
A second, yeah.
And, any discussion on it? All in favor? Opposed?
No.
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 I would, I mean, I personally would, I mean, if we want to reach out to him and say, I think he knows, because we were very positive the last time, I'm, I'm not against him setting up locations, but that's a tough one, I think.
Okay, we'll let him know that he...
All right, West Boston Public Access TV reorganization.
Okay, thank you. At, at the last meeting, I just gave you a heads up in terms of, that I would be bringing this formally before the board tonight. I have a brief description, probably take me three to five minutes to run through this, and then I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board has. So, in looking at the existing West Boston Public Access TV program that we have, it really was apparent that we have a lack of clarity as to the roles and the responsibilities of the different individuals involved in the numerous positions we have in the program, and of the PEG board members itself. Any manager knows that if you want things to run smoothly, you have to have, you know, very clear information provided to each individual involved as to what their role is within the program, what the chain of command is, what their duties, what they're responsible to complete are, who their appointing authority is, and who their direct supervisor is. And without this level of clarity, it's very common to see disagreements amongst the participants in terms of roles and responsibility. There can be, you know, staff becoming discontent, there can be personality struggles, and definitely, you know, a lack of communication. So, really, my goal for this reorganization is to make sure that we eliminate any possibilities of those kinds of complications or negative aspects to take place. And I really want to have this be done by establishing a strong PEG coordinator position to oversee the program, ensure that the program will be setting, quickly setting up a set set of policies and procedures that, you know, are common sense, easy to apply, understood, and that we, you know, move ahead and continue with developing well-trained staff and volunteers to work under the program, overseen by a very organized PEG board, that can be made of, you know, a diverse membership that we can rely on to help grow the program over the years. So, in looking at how that would be done, we did look to other PEG programs within the regional area. We researched eleven communities, receiving information on their organizational structure, their staffing levels, job descriptions, policies and procedures, whatever they were willing to share with us in that. And additionally, I personally spoke to colleagues and program representatives from several of these programs to discuss, you know, the problems that I've witnessed have been taking place, and to find out ways that we might be able to avoid some of those problems to take place. And it was based on all of that information that we've received, that I developed this following proposal for the reorganization. The first item is to clarify the PEG coordinator position. This is intended to be a part-time position, appointed by the town administrator, not to exceed twenty hours per month, and at this point, it is to be a town employee. Currently, the annual stipend is set at four thousand eight hundred dollars. What I've developed is a draft job description, which I've attached as appendix A in your packet. And this, I feel, clarifies the role for everyone. And what I would like is to have this draft job description be reviewed and approved by the personnel board, but it is a working document. The second item is to maintain our access coordinator position. It's working well. It's a part-time position, appointed by the town administrator, not to exceed twenty hours per week. It's an employee position. The annual rate of pay would continue to be set under the personnel wage schedule each year, and we do have an approved job description for this position. It's appendix B in your packet. The third item is to maintain the production assistant position. This also is a part-time position, appointed by the town administrator, less than ten hours per week as a town employee. The annual rate is set by the personnel wage schedule each year, and we do have an approved job description as seen in appendix C. The fourth item is to clarify the equipment coordinator position, to be either a town employee or a vendor-provided service, appointed by the town administrator, not to exceed twenty hours per month. The annual stipend is currently set at three thousand dollars. And in your packet, under appendix D, you have a scope of work, which is intended to be developed into a job description to be approved by the personnel board. And then the last part of the reorganization is to revise the PEG board, to be as follows. The PEG board members to be appointed by the town administrator, to set the membership to be five voting members, with the preferred makeup to be as follows. One senior citizen representative, one school representative, one sports program representative, and two citizen-at-large. And also include, within that system of the committee, the PEG coordinator as a non-voting member, and a selectman liaison as a non-voting member, with the member to be chosen by a vote of the selectman. It's intended that the PEG board members would not receive compensation from the program, so as to avoid any real or perceived conflict of interest. And the charge statement, the roles and responsibilities of the board, I've included in the packet under appendix E. And it's really the makeup of the PEG board that I spent the most time considering. Currently, we have a three-member board comprised of the outgoing PEG coordinator and two members of the board of selectmen. My goal for this board is to have five voting members, representative of our population, our community groups, and the potential sources of TV program content. This was a strong recommendation we received from each community that I personally spoke to. This diversity of the membership of the PEG board, and the demographic representation that it brings, I feel will really ensure that we have some good active participation and discussion regarding the development of programs which would directly serve our community. We have people who have already committed to becoming members of this PEG board. I have five individuals who have said they would participate in the various different, the five different listed member slots, and there's a handful of other individuals who are considering to be appointed as well in the future as needed. I have received feedback from several members of the board regarding concern about the selectmen being a non-voting liaison, and I'd like to explain what my rationale for that was. The first being that I feel that any committee should be comprised of an odd number of members. So I chose this to be a five-member board, just large enough to allow for some diverse membership within the committee, but still small enough to not be too cumbersome for this small program. What I'm trying to do is to keep these five voting seats to be free, to be filled by individuals who represent those demographics and those organizations that we want to help us build the support of the program, to help us bring volunteers from their respective agencies or resident groups, and to help, you know, build program content that we can use to improve our PEG audience, because we have diverse and exciting program content. The selectmen are the executive branch of our government. Being an ex officio member, non-voting member, would allow the selectman liaison to be part of any and all discussion, bringing thoughts and concerns that the board may have about the program to the table, can be there to guide the discussion, but leaving the operational oversight to our capable resident volunteers. Fourthly, selectmen, you're already very committed to other boards and committees, and as we have seen over the past few weeks, there are times when it becomes difficult to try to coordinate scheduling meetings because of the commitments that you already have. But most importantly, is the fact that the program and the PEG board, I feel, is a wonderful opportunity for us to develop some new people to come into town government. You know, this is an opportunity for someone who's never been involved in an elected or appointed position before, to come into a program. It's a fun program, it's a helpful program. I want this to attract residents who are interested in entry-level, so to speak, positions within our town governance. It's a low-pressure position that would attract many people, as we've seen. We already have five people waiting to be appointed. So I'm thinking that this is a chance to develop a new group of people that we can hopefully carry on to have them become involved in other aspects of our town government as well. And so, that's the basic outline of the reorganization. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
The only question I have, you started off by saying the reason why you made it ex officio is because of the A, B, and C, and then you said, we're getting new members and getting new people. You're not saying that voting selectmen would not get those new people and not get the interest?
No, what I'm pointing out is that, with a five-member board, there is a lot of interest of people in town, the majority of which hold no other position in town, never have, and they were thrilled, A, to be asked to consider this, or they applied without being asked. And I think that's a wonderful sign, that we have a committee that people want to be part of. And I said, it's a, when I say an entry-level position into town government, I don't mean that to be disparaging in any way, but what I mean is that this is a really positive program, one of the few low-pressure positions that we have in our governance structure that allows someone without any experience in local government to come in and be part of something that really helps them as a resident, but it also helps their demographic groups, whether they're the senior citizen representative, or sports program representative, or school representative. By being active within that PEG board, we're then, they are then a voice of the group that they represent. But better, you know, better yet, more importantly, is that they help us build volunteerism within the program. They help us encourage people within their group that they represent to develop, to record items that we can then broadcast on our channels. So I see this being a really positive thing that we could be doing here. And I guess, you know, what remains is this key question of, should that selectman liaison be a non-voting member or a voting member? And one of the concerns I have about making it a voting member would be the fact that I really would like to keep this be a five-member committee. I don't want it to become a seven-member committee. I just feel that's unwieldy for the size of the program.
But in regards to that, you said you had a lot of interest. We've had a PEG board for many years in town. So this isn't new. These people could have all been involved for years.
Right, but they were never asked?
Correct.
Or they felt that their role was unclear. So by providing this level of clarification, we've resolved that issue.
I could say that the committees and board vacancies, as of May thirtieth. Townwide Planning Committee, two. Cable Advisory Committee, seven. Naming, one. Agriculture, four, two. Board of SSs, one. Board of Health, one. Bylaw, two. Town Common Transit and Committee, one. I can do it. Like fifty different positions are open. Take a zoning board of appeals. We're having a tough time finding a people. Planning Board, nobody pulled the paper until the last day. You know, Park Commission, one. Park Facilities, one. Personal Board, two. Municipal Building, three. So, publics can, if they are interested, they will be there. Why this board? Why this board is so much, you are talking about that? And also, you know.
I can answer that, Raj. This is a fun program to be part of.
So Park Commission is not a fun program?
I would say that Planning Board and ZBA and Conservation Commission are probably three of our heavy lifting boards that we have. Personally, having been.
I totally disagree on that, no.
Excuse me, Raj, excuse me. Having been a Planning Board member myself, I know for a fact what it takes to be an effective Planning Board member. That is, that's a hard position to get people who have previously had no experience in town government to be willing to consider. This is, what I'm saying is that this is a good entry-level position, to get people used to this concept of being on a town board or committee, and then, if they like it, then maybe we can encourage them to go on to some of those other heavier lifting boards, like Conservation, Planning Board, Townwide Planning, Open Space Committee, whatever we have vacancies on. I'm saying this is a fun way to get new people on board to be part of our town government.
Just say, Chris, you've been on the, you and Raj have been on the committee now.
I've been on for a couple of years.
So I joined the committee as a non, before becoming a selectman, as a citizen of the town.
I just finished, so, something you'd be interested in staying on?
Yeah, I would, I would like to. I mean, I just.
And does it volume not to vote?
Well, I, just the only thing I would disagree with the town administrator, if I'm a member of this committee as an ex officio or a voting member, I'm still going to spend as much time on the committee. Because then, you're telling me that we're already busy on other things, but when I get on, when I, that's why when we sit here and do all those meetings, I say, what are we doing that? And when it's nothing, I don't want to get involved. I want to get involved with committees. So I think if it's ex officio or voting, that doesn't matter. I'll still spend as much time. You expect that ex officio to go, right? You would, yeah.
As much as able. I mean, the role of the liaison is to be there to guide and support.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it doesn't matter if it's a voting or non-voting. That's my only thing in regards.
From a time perspective.
Time, yeah. So, because you use that as one of the reasons why it's a non-voting. That we're already tied up and we have a lot of committees we're on, and it's hard to schedule meetings. But it would, this would all be, all those scenarios would still be the same, either way in this.
What I meant in that was that, that's why I didn't put the selectman liaison as being one of the five members, to have it be an extra member. I understand that if you put a commitment into it, you're going to put as much time and energy as you're able to in this committee, whether you're a voting member or not. And that's what's appropriate, and that's what's expected from a selectman's liaison, or any liaison from any committee that gets assigned to another group. But what I'm saying is that what I'd like to leave the five voting seats open, to represent those different resident demographic or program groups that I feel, you know, we need to bring in volunteers, we need them to bring in program content. And it gives us a chance to have them be a new part of our government.
So under this scenario, the current breakdown, the school representative could be a school committee member.
It could be a school committee member, it could be a teacher who's a resident, it could be a student, it could be a parent of a student.
And that's the same case with the two citizens-at-large. Could a school committee member or a teacher, they could all, two sports people could get involved, two more seniors could get involved, because it's.
But when looking to make appointments, and depending on who expresses interest or whatever, you know, if I had a choice between an at-large member who did not fit one of those other interest groups, and one who did, I would be more prone to go with the one that truly is just a citizen-at-large representative.
I think being a selectman in this committee is off limits, I guess, right? It's a disadvantage being a selectman to be on this committee.
To be filling the seats of one of those five?
Yeah, if I'm a senior citizen, I can be on the committee and voting. If I am a school committee member, or even a high school kid, I can be on this committee. But if I'm a selectman, I cannot be on the committee.
Well, Raj, as I just said.
I cannot be a voting member. This is, I think, you know, didn't look, didn't look.
If the board already has a liaison, and there's an opening, say, for an at-large, and there was no one else willing to be part of that board or committee, the board at that time, then I would give consideration to appoint any other selectman to fill that at-large seat. But if I have other individuals aside from a selectman, someone who's, you know.
I think, you know, if the selectman as liaison or self-represitive be the member, I, he or she should be a voting member. That's my view.
So you said you have five people in mind?
I do.
And people in the wings that are interested.
And in the wings.
So then I could have seven.
I think this is a perfect committee to be larger, because there's so much that goes on there. I mean, I, I know you're bringing it down to five, for whatever reason, but I think it's a perfect. If there's six or seven that are interested, I mean, we've done that many times on other committees. Somebody came forward and they're interested, we add a seat. But this committee, we're not going to do that, because we.
But please remember that what we're working with is we're working with a PEG coordinator who's a very part-time position. That person's only going to be working twenty hours a month. You're asking a twenty-hour-a-month person to coordinate a seven-member board? That's difficult to do. I'd like to keep the membership of the committee smaller, to make it easier. I want it to be, as I mentioned, I want it to be large enough so that it allows for some diversity in the makeup, but small enough so that it doesn't become overwhelming for the PEG coordinator to deal with.
So the PEG coordinator, besides, he's an ex officio, too, what is his role in controlling the meeting? Besides being ex officio, if there's seven or five?
The coordinator would not be controlling at all, would be present at the meeting, would be staff support for the meeting.
So five or seven, why would the PEG coordinator be having more work?
Because you're then coordinating with several different officials. It's, behind the scenes, working with multiple boards and committees, it's difficult to get communication, coordination, membership of the committee. And you're asking that twenty-hour-per-month person to work harder to coordinate a seven-member committee, which I personally don't think is necessary. This is a small program. Yes, we want people involved. Yes, I have a handful of other people who are interested. But if they're interested, they're going to come in as volunteers. They don't need to be part of a committee.
I think, I appreciate the work that you've put into this, because I know on the committee, we've been asking for a couple of years to try to get what other towns have, because you asked us to do it. I mean, and I think the only thing that really came out of the committee in the last months were, you asked for a budget. And basically, they took the amount of money that comes in, I think it's sixty thousand dollars or something, and they went from the sixty thousand and then they developed a budget from there, and spent the sixty thousand every year. So I didn't consider that a budget. That was just taking the money we have in and saying where we're putting it.
And that will be one of the things that the PEG board would be responsible for working with the PEG coordinator, is to develop the annual budget moving forward.
So, again, Mr. Richard, would you be interested in being on this committee as a non-voting member?
Yes. I mean, I'd be interested in just to see how, I guess we could see how it goes.
So do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept this and have Mr. Richard as our spokesman, as presented by the town administrator.
That would be a two or three, two motions.
Yeah, so, but, you know, I say that I wouldn't mind being in it, but I think, I think I wouldn't be opposed to it being a voting position. I mean, I wouldn't mind it being, just to see how it goes. How many, how many other committees are we ex officio on, that actually does something? Don't go off that list there then. We talk about every year and everybody says we haven't gone for ten years. I mean, are there any other committees that we're ex officio on?
I don't have the list in front of me. I know the number of committees each of you are currently involved in, but off the top of my. but off the top of my head, but looking at the list, I don't know which ones are ex officio or not.
I don't think any are. I think this is the first that, that I can recall.
All, can I? All the committees. CPC, Pat Crowley. Conservation, John Hadley. Economic Development, Ruchow. FISP, all the board of selectmen are voting members. Open Space, John Hadley. Planning and Zoning, me. Each and every committee, all the board of selectmen's are voting members.
Yeah, see, I, I don't, I don't recall we're ex officio on any committees.
But there are many committees that you aren't even assigned as membership on. And, you know...
Oh, sure there are.
So, this is, this is a, this is not a, um... This is not a committee or a program that deals with high-level issues that have a lot of fiscal responsibility or a lot of potential liability in terms of the activity that they handle. This is a, a small program. It's point-two percent of our operating budget. And it's meant to be something that includes, very inclusive of the community. And I don't see the need to have a seven-member committee. And, you know, if, if, if the board is uncomfortable with the selectmen liaison, you know, being non-voting, then we can talk about that some more. But, you know, I, I, I put this proposal together. I think it's a strong one. I think it'll help us meet the goals we have of getting the program back on track.
So we had a motion.
I, I would ask that you, we separate approving the policy versus who we're going to appoint, so that we have a clean vote on the policy.
Okay, so amended to accept as proposed by the town administrator.
The policy of the policy.
Yep.
So it's, it's...
The program reorganization?
Program, yep.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I think the one, only one, all of the things are fine with me. The only one, it does not matter who is going to be on the board. The board of selectmen should be a voting member. So, my vote will be no.
And, and, yeah, the, the, under discussion, I, I mean, I'm, I don't, I understand what Raj is saying. I mean, we're not ex officio on any committee. Anita kinda says that if we're a voting member, all of those things that are gonna happen won't, won't happen if there's a voting selectmen. I mean, it's not like, like the selectmen wanna take control of the committee, because we're one member out of six or seven. Um, but you, you, you mentioned a lot of things. This is a new committee, new people interested, and we have a lot of, you know, there's a lot of positive things that come out of it. All that could happen if the selectman's a voting member. You make it sound like if he's a voting member, people will be, won't wanna be interested. I don't...
My concern is that if we make the selectman a, a voting member, does that mean I have to lose one of my other representatives on the committee? Or does this become a six-member committee, which then is in danger of having tie votes, as we've seen from other boards this evening?
No.
In that case, how would we handle the situation where there was a tie vote?
I, I would, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have any problem with three citizens at large, cause I don't think it's... I think the committee, if we can have seven people on this committee, six residents, I think that's a great thing. Because over the years I've been on the committee, we were lucky to have one or two. So, I, I think it's, I think it's a win to get more people involved. On, on a committee like this, I think it's a win to have more people involved. Because it, you say it doesn't, it's only a small portion of the budget, but I think it has a big, big impact.
You, you know what? I, I'm hearing the discussion on this. I, I don't think it's that big of a deal one way or the other, but I wouldn't wanna be on a committee where I go and I have my input, and then when it comes time to make a decision, that's great, you came, you had your input. So I, you know, I don't know if, how we would go about doing this. I, I agree with Chris. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't make it three citizens and lose the ex officio. Seven people, it's not gonna affect the quorum, because my assumption is the board of selectmen members on the committee, they're gonna show up. You're adding them as a member. You still only need three of the other five, three of the other six to show up with the board of selectmen members, so it won't affect the vote. Um, I, I don't know if we can, maybe if I can make a motion to amend this, to make it three and non-ex officio, or what's...
Siobhan, take your motion back. I want you to make a motion, if you wanna make, or somebody make a motion.
I'm okay with it. So...
I, I, I make a, well...
Look, I'll take back the original motion, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll go with a three, a seven board, all voting, with three citizens.
And one selectman.
And one, to include one selectman. And then there was one school committee and one...
No, so, school representative.
School representative.
School representative, sports team representative, and senior center representative. Senior citizen representative. But all of those groups could be one of the two. Again, your, your choice, but they could go one of the three. Second that.
And, and I'm probably out of order, but I think I thought about what we're talking about. I've been on the PEG Board for a very long time. I've been involved with PEG. I'm the current PEG coordinator. There's a reason why there are people that are interested in being on the board now. There's a reason why we used to have a lot of members on board, but over the past few years we haven't. And it was a lot of what Raj and Chris have been talking about, the frustration of the disorganization of it. And this strong proposal that Anita's handing out to you is not based on just her own, um, thought process. This was the existing, um, policies and procedures and setup that was voted on in two thousand and seven that the PEG Board and the, the PEG station never followed, because we didn't even really realize it existed. So, this is, this recommendation is based on something that's already been voted by existing PEG town members. And it's been researched by, I don't know, I wanna say at least ten different communities in how they do things as well. So, when you say this is a great proposal or a great thing, it really is, because it's been put together by so many people. Again, it's been something that was voted on by the existing people at the time, back in two thousand and seven. So, there's a reason why there were people involved for a while. There's a reason why it's dwindled down. And, and your, your, you guys' sentiment was exactly correct at our last board meeting. It's not organized. My, my thought process, and I can, you guys can take it however, which way you like, is to get set and organized. This does not have to be the end-all, be-all of the way that it is. But the frustration of not getting it organized and not getting it set up a proper way, and then going from there, is why less people want to be on a major board like this. So, that's just my, my opinion. I've been involved with PEG for over ten years.
Thank you, Richard. Alright, so we had a motion to make the seven-member committee with one board selectman as a voting member. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright.
Motion to appoint a board selectman to that.
Oh, yes, okay.
Um, I'll make the motion to appoint Mr. Ruchow, as he's been there and done a good job with it.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I would just say, I agree with the organization. It's a must. We have to, because of the way it was. That's all, that's all I'd say. So I, I, I think this is very positive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, let's see. Recognize acceptance of the following donations by the Banham Committee to approve expenditures for these funds for general purposes. Twenty-five thousand dollars from Trolle's Two, twenty-five thousand dollars from Althea Gerardo, and twenty-five thousand dollars from Amy Realty Company.
Make a motion to approve or accept?
I recognize. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anita?
Okay, under the town administrator's report, wanted to give you a status update as to where we are with the sewer rate study, which we briefly referred to earlier this evening. Uh, we have received a draft contract from Ty &amp; Bond, um, which is currently being reviewed by Colm and Patty Page. There's a copy of that draft contract in your packet there. What I would like to do is, because we, we are getting behind in the proposed schedule that we had put together for this, what I would ask is that the board conditionally approve the contractor from, excuse me, the contract from my signature, conditional upon KP law, um, acceptance of the final language of the document.
Make a motion to approve?
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you. Um, I have some positive news in terms of the grant writer update. Um, I recently met with our two volunteer grant writers, Patty Page and Theo Jordan. Um, now that our voters have approved moving ahead with the pre-construction phase of the senior center, we'll be beginning to research various federal, state, and foundation grants that might be available for offsetting the costs of the construction of the project and/or equipping and furnishing, uh, the building when it's completed. Um, as we know, there were some limitations that we found previously in the foundation grants that required funding be in place. So now that, at least that we have the pre-construction, the design and the pre-construction costs approved, we're hoping that we might be able to move ahead with some of these, um, grant applications for that project. The other thing we talked about was what other grants might exist for our other departments and programs. Um, I, I did give them the information for the Stanton Foundation for the Dog Park Grant that we've been referring to, and we'll be talking about it at our July nineteenth meeting. Uh, so they're gonna be poised to help us when we're ready to apply for that. Uh, but they both also expressed opportunities for some of the grant programs that might be available for various different, um, programs or events, particularly for children's recreation programs. The chair of the Parks Commission is gonna pull together a list of past programs that the town has offered, so as to inform for both Theo and Patty what types of programs they might wanna look for potential grants for. And what this would do is when the rec director is hired and we start moving to develop some new rec programs, if we can find some grants to offset those programs, it'll reduce the cost for the families. We might be able to reduce the registration fee for those programs. So it'd be easier for some of our younger families to take advantage of the, the programs. And as they always do, they're continuing to regularly look for other programs that might be out there for our town departments. And, uh, the two of them are talking about putting together some good advisory memos that I'll be submitting to the departments when they're ready to help department heads better understand what they might wanna consider for grant opportunities out there, based on what Theo and Patty are seeing as being available. So I thought that was a very positive step in the right direction.
I think that's, I think that, that's great that they're, that they're doing this. I mean, that they're volunteers and they're doing this. Have they looked into possibly, I mean, not that they, they should, they should look into getting paid themselves. Are there grants out there that may fund a grant-writing group in our town? I know some other towns have, they get grants for that.
You know, we haven't seen any grants that fund grant writer positions.
Okay.
But what you typically do see for some of the grants is that if a town were awarded a grant, then it does pay some percentage, usually a small percentage, five or ten percent, that can be used toward grant administration, which would be another aspect of what they would help us with. And in that way, we could pay them for that work of administering the grant if we were awarded the grant funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious to know. Did we get any grant? Are they successful in any, any grant?
Um, I did not bring that list with me.
It's been a year, right?
They did receive some funding, um, I believe it was for the Council on Aging for Programming. There were, um, several grants that they've written, which we have not heard back on. The largest one of which is for the fire truck for the fire department. That was a FEMA grant, and I'm not, I believe it was in July that we're gonna hear whether or not we're awarded those funds. Although, to be honest, none of us are feeling too positive that we would be awarded funds on that one. But, you know, they did a good job working with the chief and putting that, um, application through.
At least taking care of the paperwork.
Okay, um, number three is, um, at one of our prior selectmen meetings, um, one of you had mentioned that it might be interesting if we could put together a summary of what the true cost, the total cost of running our different town departments are. Uh, so that would mean that we would, you know, look at any tax dollars, any grant funds, any revolving funds that might be available, um, or any state aid that we use to offset the cost of running that program. Uh, we spoke about it briefly at town meeting when we tried to better help people understand, uh, you know, what services are covered by those revolving funds that we annually re-approve. Um, so what we're gonna do is, at the next staff meeting coming up next week, I'll be working with the staff to try to identify three departments that we can do as pilot cases in trying to develop this true cost analysis, so to speak. So I wanted to let you know that that's moving ahead, and I'll keep you updated as we go ahead with that one.
Right, cause that, that, we've talked about it ten years, ten years ago, to try to do that, just out, also putting insurance, health insurance into each one of those departments. Cause right now, we always say, health insurance is outside, but we don't know how much of that three, four million dollars goes to this department, how many goes. So if we could break that up, we could have a true cost of what every department runs.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a true cost for what those, what we call Schedule Nineteen costs are for the school side, but we have not been allocating those costs to the other departments.
Right.
So that would be part of the mix. So it would be all the wages, all the benefits, all the miscellaneous equipment. It would be fees that are required to be paid, memberships, you know, wages. All of that would be identified.
I think what we're gonna see from that is, you're right, the ones that bring in fees, the groups that bring in fees, if those fees stop, uh, grants stop, there could be an impact to our budget. Millions.
Yeah, it could, yeah.
It's gonna be over a million dollars if it's not on the budget.
Right.
Oh, easily.
Yeah.
Easily, yeah. And then the last one, um, under miscellaneous updates, is just to let you know that, and you'll be seeing it later on in the agenda, uh, that our longtime animal control officer, Charlie Whitkus, has resigned from that position. So we're currently using the services of our alternate, Stephen Jones. He's, he's doing a great job. He's picking it up. But as I mentioned, in the course of developing the FY eighteen budget, um, I have been looking into the possibility of doing a regionalized approach to animal control officer services. And, um, I did speak to CMRPC, our regional planning agency. And right now, really, the only group that we could potentially join into is the Rutland Regional Animal Control Officer Program. So I have a meeting with that group on July twelfth. Um, in speaking to the town administrator over in Rutland, um, you know, it really will depend on the membership of, of the other communities. And those communities that are currently in it include Rutland, Berry, Princeton, and New Braintree. So I'll let you know more after that July twelfth meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Jones. I had an occasion to meet him the other day here at town hall, and he's, he stepped up. I mean, he's, he's learning on the fly, but he's willing to help out, cause he has a full-time job.
He does have a full-time job, so he, he can't be considered for, you know, the, the replacement for Mr. Whitkus at this time. Um, but certainly, you know, he is willing to help us now, and he could potentially be an alternate as needed moving forward as well.
Yeah, thank him. That was nice.
And that's it for the town administrator's report.
Thank you. Alright, first update, OPM selection. Uh, as at last FISP meeting, we voted to have Cardinal Construction send them out to negotiate for OPM. And, uh, what do we need to do from here? We need to vote?
So, um, at the last FISP meeting, the, the FISP committee did vote to recommend Cardinal Construction uh, for the OPM, uh, for the senior center project. Um, so the board would need to discuss and vote on that recommendation tonight. And also, I would ask the board to identify who I should be working with in negotiation of the fee proposal for Cardinal Construction.
So the motion to be, should, should be to move into negotiations with Cardinal Construction?
Would be to accept the recommendation, uh, for Cardinal Construction and to assign someone to work with me in the negotiation of that contract.
So, okay, that, that's, uh, so moved.
I'll, I'll second the recommendation to approve Cardinal Construction.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we need someone to, uh, negotiate.
Mr., Mr. Construction Business?
I'd be happy to do it, but somebody else wants to do it?
I'll second Mr. Pat.
Would you wanna do it, Chris? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there, I, I, I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, uh, where were we? Uh, architectural selection update?
Right, so, um, we did have to do, um, a, an addendum to the, um, request for qualifications document. So because, anytime you wish an addendum, you have to give people additional time to respond. So I changed the date from the nineteenth, which was this past Monday, to next Monday, which is the twenty-sixth. So I've already received one proposal from one architectural firm, um, so I'm hoping that we will get a number. We put out, I believe it was about thirty-seven companies did request copies of the request for qualifications document, which was a great response. And, um, you know, I'm hoping that we'll get a good number of proposals. And as soon as, um, the, the two PM deadline passes on Monday... And as soon as the, the two P M deadline passes on Monday, I'll let the board and FISD know the number of proposals that we received.
Approval of invoices, Kelo and Bennett invoicing number nine, ten, and five, five, four, six, each for four thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars.
So that's each, each at meaning a total. That's a total, or they're each four thousand?
No, they're each, each invoice is at the amount of four thousand six.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Cattle invoice number fourteen for seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I receive builders number six for four hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just general update. The standers spread some loom in the front of the property. They getting ready to pave it. The saddening is almost complete. Inside, sheetrock's going up, and it's coming. It's coming good.
And just to, we got, to add to that update, we're going to have, now the meeting start for the senior center. So anybody that's interested in input, our next meeting is the twelfth of July at seven o'clock right here. So please come forward and give us your input on what you want to see for our senior center.
Okay, appointments and resignations, comments on the, town administrator reappointments for tomorrow to June. Anya, would you go ahead?
Sure, so we have the Assistant Animal Control Officer, Stephen Jones, for one year. And for the Open Space Implementation Committee, Raymond DeSanti, for one year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Assistant reappoint James Marinelli for the Finance Committee effective July first, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrent on the appointment of Whitney Benad for the Library Designee for the Municipal Building Committee effective June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrent on the appointment of Robert Chisholm to the Philly's Implementation Committee effective June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
He did quit on us.
He missed us.
We just wanted, we just wanted to tell him, welcome back. You did a great job, you know, for senior saying that.
I think his health is getting better. His health is getting better.
Yeah, it's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrent on the appointment of William Chase to the Earth Removal Board and Community Preservation Committee as a Designee of the Conservation Commission effective July first, two thousand seventeen, for a term to expire in June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrent on the appointment of Brittany Planey as a WBPA TV peg coordinator effective July first, two thousand seventeen, for a one-year term with an annual stipend of four thousand eight hundred dollars. Right?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrent on appointment of Richard Seymourani as a peg equipment coordinator effective July twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, for a six-month term to expire on January twentieth, two thousand eighteen, with a prorated annual stipend of three thousand dollars.
So moved.
Any discussion?
But to, for sake of the discussion, I, I will second it.
No, no discussion.
In our last meeting, you know, we talked about three months. But it will be fine if he does the job. Six months, fine. But provided, you know, you should get the job done.
Yeah, I think, I think in regards to having the peg.
Board as well as the peg coordinator.
New peg coordinator. And Brittany's coming back. She was involved in the.
She was working for the town for seven years prior as the access coordinator, which Tim Scanlon knows fills that role.
Right, and she's, and she's willing to come back to be the peg coordinator, so that will help.
She's a wealth of experience. She's a strong leader. She'll be providing good oversight to Tim and to others.
And the new organization, I mean, I think it's, it's definitely a plus.
What, yeah, what, I, I'll ask, what's the role of an equipment coordinator?
As you see in your packet.
Yeah.
The scope of duties is that the peg equipment coordinator reports to the peg coordinator. The person is responsible for the care and maintenance of all peg cable equipment, responsible for researching options and making recommendations to the peg coordinator and peg board for the equipment purchases needed to augment or replace existing equipment. She'll have the ability to purchase necessary parts and equipment with the advanced permission of the peg coordinator for purchases with a value of five hundred dollars or less. Purchases larger than five hundred dollars shall only be done after a vote of approval by the peg board or by permission of the town administrator in time-sensitive situations. She'll work with vendors as needed to schedule any related installations, repair, or other necessary work in accordance with all applicable procurement laws. She'll work closely in conjunction with the access coordinator in the scheduling of any equipment installation or repairs that may impact the ability to record or broadcast programs. She'll develop and maintain an inventory of all equipment. She'll train staff and volunteers in the proper use of all equipment. She'll assist the access coordinator with the tracking of equipment lent out to volunteers. She'll fill in for the access coordinator in his or her absence. And the equipment coordinator would need to possess the following skills: have a mechanical knowledge of the various different equipment that's used, be able to operate a variety of different production equipment, competent in the use of industry-standard editing softwares, incompetent in the computer operation with emphasis on the types of editing and such that needs to be done, and able to work with minimal supervision.
So that was the equipment?
That's the equipment.
So I guess when you kept saying she'll, you meant, you meant to say he or she? Is, it's not written, I, I'm trying to find it here. It doesn't say.
When you write a job description, you put in the key points of what the responsibilities are, and you just list it as the different items. You don't repeatedly say he or she. You just say shall, report to, shall be responsible for.
Okay.
I think, you know, we hope to see there are few pending things could be done, taken care of within that six-month period. This board is, the Select Boardroom is echoes. We do need to do some soundproofing. And also, this one, this is so glad, you need to have a screen. This has been talked for over a couple of years. It's never been done. And also, the, at this time, you know, we cannot record Select Board meetings as well as the Planning Board meeting simultaneously. The, they can record only Select Board meetings or the Planning Board meetings. So if they have to record simultaneously, they have to record it on a tripod camera. So those are all some of the major issues. I think that comes under the equipment coordinator.
Not in its entirety, Raj, no. I mean, some of the things you're talking about are larger-scale items that would need to be discussed by the peg board.
Yes, I agree. But that's the duty of the peg equipment coordinator. So he has to take it to the peg, peg board.
The peg board would be discussing any improvements that are necessary, some of which may be brought to the attention of the peg board by the peg equipment coordinator or by the peg coordinator themselves.
Anyway, I'm out.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to appoint him for a six-month period. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, me.
Okay, concurrents, uh, concurrent appointment of Jeffrey Legrandre?
Lechandra.
Lechandra, I'm sorry. To the Parks Mission for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrent on the appointment of following police officers for town link, has to do work details at the rate of forty-three dollars per hour for a period covering July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Frederick Hastid, Gary Henderson, Kevin Lamb, John McNally, James A. Mcnamara, Jose Meladi, Patrick Mormeter, Eric Schmidt, and Andrew Shaw.
So moved.
Second.
Why do we have to, on a yearly basis, keep reappointing the same people? Is, is there any reason why we can't just say, until further notice, these people are authorized, these special police officers? I mean, every year, we have a list at the end of the day that's got three hundred names on it.
Yeah. It's pretty standard that you do the annual reappointment so that, you know, accounting has a record to show that this has been approved. It's very rarely that towns will do a multi-year appointment of this type of position. It's really, we want very crisp record that each year, this individual has been reapproved to work under the, the updated terms and conditions for that year.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, as mentioned before, Charlie, who was the animal patrol officer for past eighteen years, has resigned. As Chris said, we want to thank him for his time and the job.
Thank you. If we, I, I would ask that we put a letter together from the board thanking him for his years of service, if that's our report, and we all sign it.
Initial upon his appointment as Parks Mission, which he was, Jeffrey Lechandre resigns as Parks Facility Committee member effective immediately.
So we lost that.
So we lost, we gave what we lost one.
But we have a person interested in the Parks Facility Committee, so.
Jeff will probably. The appointee from the Parks Commission. He'll be back on the board next meeting.
No, we already have an appointee from the Parks Commission.
Is Jim the new?
Jim.
So, so he, did he ever come to one of our meetings? So it wasn't because, it wasn't because he didn't like us. He just, he just wanted to go to the parks.
His preference is the Parks Commission.
That's great. They, they need somebody, so that's.
All right, uh, let's see, we're going to announce the phone numbers for the public safety departments. Need one? Right here, it's nine one one is for emergency. The main number for this public safety is seven seven four, four five oh, three five one oh. Is answered by the Holden Dispatch. They can forward your call to any individual on the fire or police department. Tell me all the old five oh eight eight three five numbers are still, they still ring in Holden? For the time being?
Yes. Any, any number that goes through will bring to Holden.
And there's no board meeting on July fifth, so we'll have it the third week?
Our, our regular meeting for July will be July nineteenth. You are having a very brief special meeting just before the FISD meeting on July twelfth, just to deal with some year-end transfers.
I probably will not be able to make that meeting at all.
And also, number two. Anya, do you?
Would you like me to read this through?
Yeah.
This, this is an exciting announcement from the municipal light plant. They have partnered with the Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Company to bring two incentives to West Boylston Electric customers. The first being that customers could get ten thousand dollars off a two thousand seventeen Nissan Leaf electric vehicle, which is awesome. There's also opportunity to get a free Wi-Fi equipped Level Two residential electric vehicle charger to, to work in conjunction with the vehicle. So if anybody has any interest in this program at all, they can contact the municipal light plant at five oh eight eight three five three six eight one.
All right, uh, let's see, future general items selections reports.
I have a few things. First, I'd like to thank and recognize Officer David Richardson from the Police Department. This past Monday was his last day on the job after thirty-two years, so thank you for your dedicated service to the town. The school department has announced the, the bus fees. They're due August first. For anybody that has schoolchildren, you pay your bus fee by August first. There is a reduction to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per student with a three hundred and fifty-dollar cap per family. After August first, it's going to be two and a quarter and a four fifty cap. So if you're, if you're going to have kids that are going to take the bus next year, you should take advantage of that. Last selectmen's meeting, I congratulated Flynn Mitchell for coming in second at the, the joint meet. He went on to states. He took first at the, I'm sorry, he came in second at the states. He took first at the New England Regional in Javelin. He then flew down to North Carolina, and he took second at the nationals.
Wow.
So that's amazing, and a great job for Flynn. And then last congratulations is to the majors-level Little League. It was a three-game series. The Red Sox, down nine-two, came back, won ten-nine in the seventh inning on a, the third game of the three-game set on a walk-off homerun by Shane Gardner. And that was, and thanks for his mother, who has run the snack shack at the Little League for about the past four years and hasn't got, has not got to see him play until last night for the first time, so. Congratulations to the Red Sox, and, and thank, thank you Laurel for your dedicated service to running that snack shack. And that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Just to, I, Pat, not that, just to clarify, I talked to one of the school community members. That fee is due by that date. And if not, they want it done by, they want it paid by that date. If not paid, there's a late charge.
Okay.
Yeah, instead of a, because people are thinking that if they get in early, no, the fee, and I'm, I'm told that it's been reduced.
It has. It was two hundred, now it's one seventy-five.
So they reduced the fee also, so it's.
And the reason, you're right, the reason they want it by August first is so that they can develop the bus routes now, contract with the bus company, and not be scrambling in, you know, a week before school starts to say, what are the bus routes going to be?
And the, the other, the other flip side that, that the school committee also mentioned that if, if you come in late, there'll be a late fee, and there may not be a seat on the bus for you. So I think you need to get those fees in as soon as possible.
Okay, Roger, reading?
And the only thing I could, I could ask, I know we've done all this heating and, and air conditioning checking in all the other buildings, and we really didn't do much for this building. But I've come in sometimes on the weekend, and that first floor is like an icebox. So I, I, we don't need an answer, I mean, you know, I just.
But can I, can I answer that as an announcement form?
Okay.
That you tasked us with, you know, looking to see if we were able to apply as a Green Communities designation to, to the state. And so we are about to begin a, an energy grade audit of our town buildings.
Okay.
So things like that will be found during that audit process.
You said town buildings, meaning?
So it will include the schools, the library, DPW, the public safety, soon to be just fire station, town offices. Obviously, we're not doing COA because we leased that space. So, and we're even going to have them look at the police station just in terms of making sure that the design or whatever, you know, there's potential that they conclude, include some other things that might be grant-eligible post-construction.
We don't have to do the public safety building. That's buttoned up tight. There's no energy lost there at all.
A new one?
All right, so we're going to, so we have motion to go on to executive session.
I don't, I will, if I can get to it. If someone else has it, I can.
I move to enter into executive session under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Part Two, contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
And we will not be coming back into open session.
So we need to do a roll call vote to enter?
That's just to, just to add, that's building inspector's contract.
Correct. Raj?
Aye.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I know five.